All right, time being six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Swenson?
Here.
Flemish?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
Most?
Here. All right, at this time, would everyone shut off your cell phones, or at least put them on vibrate? Item number three, is there any reason for a commissioner to abstain for a financial conflict of interest or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I have none.
No.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda. I did have one item that I think is a repeat. Item 21 is township secession, and item 26 is township board meeting update. The township secession, I think we can eliminate because that will be talked about in the township board meeting update. Is everyone all right if we eliminate item 21?
I move that we approve the agenda with the deletion of item 21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda minus item 21. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The agenda has been adopted with the minor correction. Thank you. Time for a public comment. Patty Graham Cowell, please.
I feel kind of put upon to talk about the epidemic that's going on in Wuhan, China. I know the WHO declared a pandemic, whatever they did. There's still some really basic things that we can do to protect ourselves, and I just want to remind you that actually the influenza A and B strains are a much higher threat to everybody. Get your flu shot. It is just like your kids. They keep hitting that test button, you know? Well, what you're doing is you're giving your immune system a little test button to make sure that it gears up and gets your body ready for anything, really, but for the flu. Wash your hands. You know, they teach us, when I worked at the hospital a Coons age ago, say the ABCs. Get your hands wet, put the soap on. Friction, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. For those of you who have little kids, teach them to wash their thumbs. How many of you remember to wash your thumbs? Wash the backs of your hands. If you're not wearing a wristwatch, wash your wrists. Rinse it under running water. And then if you're going into a surgery suite or something, you want really clean, don't turn the thing off, don't turn the handles off. Use a paper towel. Use a clean towel. And your hands are really clean. Don't forget nail beds. If you've had pneumonia 100 times, and there are people who've had a lot of pneumonia who need to wear masks, wear a mask in the cold. If you're scared of the flu, go into the clinic or doctor, whatever, wear a mask. This is a respiratory illness. You need to protect your nose and your mouth. Of course, your eyes, yes, two droplet when people cough. Along with the, I forgot what I was going to say, there was an important thing. Cover your coughs, those types of things. You should be good, really and truly, unless there's somebody from Wuhan Province that comes here and infects everybody who actually has it. We should be good. But please get your flu shots and wash your hands. Oh, oh, yeah, the alcohol hand sanitizer, I remembered. The alcohol hand sanitizer, people, that is for respiratory viruses. You see it in bathrooms, it makes me laugh, it makes me split a gut. You know why? It does zero, zero, for any bathroom germs. It is a respiratory 60% alcohol hand sanitizer. Use your hand sanitizer, you'll be good. Thank you very much, guys.
Read the word.
Not the flu.
Thank you, thank you. It's a good reminder.
Anyone else in the audience care to make a public comment? Public comment is closed at this time. Item number five, approval of minutes from January 21, 2020.
Madam Chairman, I had, if you look on the fourth line down, it says Chair Loes closed public comment. That should probably go two lines further down after the actual public comment. That would be the only correction I would have. Do you see where I say?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I would move approval with the corrections.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 21, 2020 minutes with the correction noted. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes have been approved with the minor adjustment. Item six, claims.
I have a question on page two. Meyer Henry and Sergeant LLP for $20,073. I was wondering what that was for.
Wasn't that for the lawsuit?
That was for the scouring on the Jim River. I thought he was doing that on a percentage. I'm very positive that was the agreement.
That could be done.
Then I object to paying that bill.
Further comments on the claims?
I would agree with Don. We probably should look into that before we pay that one. And with that, I would move approval minus the one that Don mentioned on page two. For $20,073.68. Patty, is that what you would recommend, not pay that until we find out somewhere?
You can look into it, yep.
Donna, that's kind of what you were getting at, too? Don't pay that one?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move approval minus the $20,073 claim for Meyer Sergeant LLP.
That's a motion.
Motion and a second to approve the claims minus the Meyer Henry Sergeant for $20,073.68. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Claims have been approved except for the Meyer Henry.
And then, Rob, will you look into that, then?
Yeah. I know there's a contract somewhere. I think there's one somewhere. I'll look and see for it. I don't, I don't.
January payroll.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January payroll as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. January payroll is approved. Item seven, one-day temporary malt beverage for Six Meridian. We are actually 10 minutes ahead of schedule for this. Is it all right if we go ahead and do this, or should we delay that till 6:20?
It was advertised for 20.
I would wait.
Okay.
So, sure, if there's anything else that doesn't, isn't kind of sensitive, then I would handle those matters, like updates.
All right.
Is this the first time that this has been up for one day, or?
No. They do it every year.
They do it every year.
Out at the Human Service, the Mead Cultural Center, where they have their ball.
Okay.
I have raffle tickets, if anybody's interested. I already got Don.
Let's go ahead and hear from Brian Hunhoff. Is Brian here? Ah, we're really, how about the sheriff? Would you like to go now?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Let's go to item 10 and hear the sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll try to be quick. You should have three months' worth of financial information you got up at one time over the last three months. I'll try to summarize it all. It's pretty good. Last year, talk about fiscal year 2019, the total budget for the jail was $1,685.70. As of December 31st of last year, we were $39,000 under budget, which is good, and that's probably because we weren't holding as many prisoners because of the remodel. Total operational cost for the jail last year was $1,645,870, with a total jail income of $1,625,870. So, we're good shape. That works out well. The sheriff's office itself, we have a total office budget of $1,262. We're under budget by $9,000 at the end of the year, and we generated $136,616 in sheriff's fees. So, overall, I think it looks good. Any questions on those items?
No, I did pull the 2018 number, and we're about $325,000 less, which is expected because of the work being done on the jail.
About $20,000 less, from my calculations.
Oh, I had 2018 at $1,949,000?
We were over two total.
Two total.
What I figured, we're about $20,000 on, from my screen. I'll double check, but I'm pretty certain that would be accurate.
Okay.
But...
Sheriff, I don't want to, you might cover this later, but how's the remodel coming?
The jail remodel is going fine. I think this Thursday, they're going to have the walkthrough of the jail itself. They've been paying a $500 penalty since the 15th of January per day. They're late, but I think within the next couple of weeks will be wrapped up. As part of that, I've got an item there on the jail painting. While we're in the middle of moving things around, now would be the optimum time to paint a couple of the pods that have been heavily used, and guesstimating, it'll be between $8,000 and $10,000 to do that. We've received one bid, we're waiting on another one, but I don't want to wait till the next commission meeting to bring it, because that'll put us back, you know, another couple of weeks from doing that. But after the final payment to the general contractors for the jail remodel, I guesstimate we'll have still close to half a million dollars in the jail capital improvement fund, which is well enough to cover the painting. So, I just need the commission to approve, go ahead with the painting to a certain amount, but I'm guesstimating it'll be $10,000.
I'd move approval of the sheriff's request for painting.
I'll second it.
Patty, do you need an exact amount on that? Or a not to exceed, or something?
Not to exceed. You can put that on that.
Madam Chairman, is there further discussion on this?
Yes.
I got a question. Mr. State's attorney, do we, if we only have one bid and it's $10,000, is that okay to do that, or do we? Okay. That was my only question.
It's under 20, we don't need to put it out.
That was my question, so.
Twenty-five.
We always try to get a couple.
Sure, sure. And time is of the essence on this.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve bid for jail painting. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. You can go with your bid for jail painting.
Okay.
Did we want to approve the quarterly report, too?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll get, yep.
Okay.
So, you can go ahead and make a motion on that if you'd like.
Yeah, I move that we approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the sheriff's quarterly report. Further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Grant for UJS.
Towards the end of last year, the court's administrative office asked our maintenance people, Jeff, I think, they wanted, in one of the offices, the public offices, they needed to upgrade the security there, it's kind of open, and to raise the desk up and so forth. And I asked Jeff, I said, "Hold off," because we were applying for a grant from UJS anyway for some security stuff, and we put that into the grant, which they approved, and we received a check for $5,302, which is roughly 80% of the cost of both projects, and you just have to accept this as unanticipated revenue, I guess.
Do we have the money?
I have it right here. Received.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the grant as unanticipated revenue for the sheriff.
And that would go into the courts.
Madam Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the grant. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Grant approved.
Are there no other questions? That's all I've got.
Thank you. All right. Brian Hunhoff, thank you for coming down a little early. Sorry about that.
It looked like my phone was a little ahead of schedule. Hello, commissioners? All right, this is my annual report, and we collected $303,522 in fees in our office. That's an office record. Our old record was 300 even, roughly, and that $303,522 includes $116,771 in land transfer fees. And that's an offshoot of the fact that we have had $116.8 million in real estate sales, which is another record that actually breaks our old record by 5.7 million. So, that's a pretty good jump. I'll get into that a little bit more later. We had over 8,000 transactions in our office. Our vital records, which by that I mean death, birth, marriage, burial records, those were pretty steady as compared to 2018. Our real estate records, as you might guess by that number we cited a minute ago, they were all up anywhere from 70 to 100 over our 2018 numbers. For instance, we had 100 more mortgages this year than last year. We had 809 mortgages total, 714 mortgage satisfactions. We had 991 land transfers, 947 deeds, copy requests, 669. Most of those are $1 requests, or two, one or two. County liens were up about 300. We have 1,109 county liens, and these days, those are falling into two categories, which is just general poor relief, which is oftentimes medical, clinic, hospital, that kind of thing, or drug help. And then we have legal, or court-appointed counsel. And that's, we used to get a lot of ambulance liens, but Steve's got a different collection system he's using right now, so we haven't seen very many of those last year. All right. Our office expenditures last year were $208,953. That's about 2,000 above our five-year average of $206,434. I mentioned that we collected a record, $303,522, so that's about 94,000, 95,000 more than was spent on the office, so that was a good net. We had $43,389 in copies revenue, which is another new record. And I mentioned the $116.8 million in real estate activity, and that was real steady throughout the year. We didn't have that big 18 to 20 million dollar month that drove a lot of our past records, you know, like a Lewis and Clark hospital sale, which was like 14 million by itself, and Dakota Plains and some others. We had very steady, we had six straight months over 10 million, nine of 12 months over 9 million, and a lot of it, I would say, was driven by home sales. So, our monthly average for real estate was 9.7 million. I mentioned that we had an increase in the county liens into the vital records, and a lot of these numbers I get from either Sacred Heart Hospital in this first one, or else the rest from the St. Dakota Department of Health. We had 543 births at Sacred Heart Hospital last year, which was about 50 below our 12-year average of 592. In-county deaths, now this is a number that includes some non-residents, and certainly a majority of county residents, but it will include some non-residents who were brought here and perhaps die at our hospital. So, we had in-county deaths of 285. By provisional data, what I mean by that is it could drop by a few, it's not going to go down, but sometimes a couple more trickle in, and if I ask them for this number again in a few months, it might be 287 or 288. Anyway, it's a pretty high number for us. Our nine-year average for deaths that occur here is 260, and you can see where we had a kind of a jump from 2011 to 2013. In-county deaths averaged 232, and now for the last six years, they've averaged 273. And now resident deaths, and this is only county residents, however, it does include an occasional county resident who might die outside of the county limits, this number would include that. So, we had a 20-year high in resident deaths, 270, and again, kind of correlated with the in-county deaths. From 2000 to 2014, we were averaging about 200 resident deaths per year, and now for the last five years, we've averaged 251, and 270 is obviously well beyond that. A few years, excuse me, a few months from now, I'll check, and they'll give me a breakdown. The state health department will tell me exactly which types, which causes of death drove that increase, so I'll let you know when I get that. Now, we had 162 marriage licenses, which is a little below our 12-year average of 172. And divorces, this is a number I get from the clerk of courts. We had 63, which is pretty average. Our 12-year average is 66. Burial permits, pretty average year. Population, as you can see, has been trickling up. Don't have the 2019 estimate yet, however. Of course, we're all excited to see the 2020 number, and hopefully, you know, we'll jump a little bit. Last year, what did we grow by 20? From 2017 to 2018, they say we grew by only 27 people, so hopefully, we'll have a little bigger number than that to report when the 2019 number comes in. I think we will, probably, based on all the housing we're seeing. That is my report, and I'm glad to answer any questions. Good year, except for those deaths. I suppose that's attributable somewhat to our aging population, like, you know, a lot of communities have, that have, you know, senior living facilities like we do.
Questions?
Nope. That's all I have.
All right. Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of the quarterly report for registered deeds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the annual report.
Yeah, I wonder if you want to put yearly?
Yearly.
Because you approved the quarterly last.
I'm sorry, I'll amend my motion to the yearly report.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, may I ask him one more question?
Sure.
I'd also, he's too modest to say this, but he is going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame for Yankton High School Fine Arts, and I believe that would deserve a round of applause.
February 10th.
Actually, two Hunoffs, Bernie and Brian, both at the same time, so congratulations.
I'm grateful that they gave you that honor, and I'm grateful they recognized journalism, which was most of my career, you know, they recognized that as a fine art, and I'm grateful they didn't look up my old high school GPS.
All right, moving back to item number seven, which is a one-day temporary malt beverage for Six Meridian, which was scheduled for 6:20 hearing. Are there any questions about the application?
I guess I was, is it just hard liquor? Are they selling beer, too, or what's the?
Malt beverage is beer.
Beer and spirit?
Wine, yep.
Isn't that because you're a movie star now?
No. That's...
We just started the hearing on the malt beverage.
Is there a provision in there for a designated driver? I'd hate to have the county be responsible for somebody's death or an accident just for a one-day permit. I'm not against drinking, but maybe we leave ourselves a little bit of liability by doing that.
Yeah, I think that's a matter of individual freedom. Adults are, hopefully, at this point, responsible enough to not do that.
Just wanted to note it.
Sure.
Further discussion on the commission? I would open it up for public questions at this time. Would anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? There being no comments, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
I move approval of the one-day temporary malt beverage.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the one-day temporary malt beverage for Six Meridian. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ketterine?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Flemish?
Yes.
Most?
Motion passes. The application has been approved. Moving on to item number eight, amend the five-year highway plan. Mr. Selachuk.
And we had discussion on moving forward on the rest of the Jim River bridges, getting P.E. grants, applying for P.E. grants for Fleegs, Johnson, and Jamesville Bridge. We're in the process of the P.E. grant on the Stone Church Bridge as of right now, so...
Do you have any idea when that one's? I know we have some people here from the Odessa Township. Do you have any idea when that's going to start, the preliminary engineering for Stone Churches?
They have started.
It's already started?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're working on it, so.
Yeah, they started this last fall.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, you see on the map there, I added the other three bridges on the five-year plan map, and also on the spreadsheet for 2021, and then the revenue source table. I know it says planning to apply for in 2021, but we'll apply for it this year. The applications are due August 1st, and the application will say 2021 on it, and then the majority of the work will be done in 2021. So, with that, I have a resolution that I need signed and have to send into here.
Mike, the reason for the change in the five-year plan was that you had received advice that a multiple application would be...
Possible in the future.
In the future, so this is a way of actually saving money.
Yeah, first stepping stone into the process.
I believe last year, there was a federal grant that some counties out west got because they had their preliminary engineering done, and this is just like you're saying, Don, as we're trying to get ahead of the game, and if that becomes available, we'll be ready to go, hopefully.
Further questions for Highway Superintendent? I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of the resolution for the five-year plan.
Second.
I have a... I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the five-year highway plan. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Amendment approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Not so fast.
How's the snow removal going?
Hopefully, we're done, right? That would be nice.
I've actually had several people say, say what a great job the snow has been this year, so actually got some good comments, so keep up the good work, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Item 11, sound system quote.
Mr. Anderson's here.
I gave you guys the final quote numbers. I noticed the numbers have gone up. I just wanted a couple of things that I missed on there. First thing is the white speakers, they were, I thought they came as a pair, found out they were not, so I caught that. So that drove, I was able to bring the price per pair down, but it's an individual price versus a pair. The other thing we're going to do with this microphone here, we're going to actually wire this, so it's going to be like your mics there, not the base station, but it's going to be a flush mount. You'll have some control over it and stuff like that. We're going to wire different, talking to the manufacturer, and we all agreed that this came up as a better option. That drives the price up a little bit, but we're going to get better quality in the end on that, instead of just having an old analog-style mic. It'll be part of the digital system. So that added a little bit of money there.
Which one, which number is that?
That would be under the mics, the GM 6523 mics, they're 270 apiece, along with the flush socket and the flush faceplate. So that's, there's about 275 there, plus one other mic. So it adds about 500, 600 bucks there. Also, I put just a little bit of labor on there. We're putting in nine mics, I bid this as nine mics versus, actually 10 mics with this one now, so there'd be three over there, six on this station, and one here. So that's how we're going to bid that out. Cables, here's where I, here was the other big thing that I missed. For the cabling on these mics, you got to use a shielded type Cat 5 or 6. I'm going to save some money by, I did the research, we can build these cables ourselves. If I buy the manufactured ones, it raises the price about another 20 to 30 percent. Found out what needs to be done, we can build them. The nice thing about that is I don't have to buy a 20-foot cable for a 10-foot run. I can manufacture it, so we can dress things up a little nicer, and I can drive that cost down a little bit, and still achieve what we need to achieve for the project, so. So that's, but I did forget those, that did add a, I put a 750 to 1,000, I'm hoping to keep that close to the 750 number when I build this myself, Chris and I, I should say, by myself. And I just put in there a little bit for Michelin's parts, you know, we're going to add some speakers over here and here. I don't think I'll be able to get the cable in that outside wall. I think I'm going to have to kind of come from the back, the top, and put a little wire mold in, so there'll be some wire mold. And when we put the rack in, I want to mount a backer board, and not just put the rack against the drywall, I want to put a backer board, so we've got something to, sometimes that's nice to have that, to attach other cables and stuff, to dress things up nicely. So some little things like that, we'll add some, it'll cost, I estimate that 100, 200 bucks. Again, that's, I can't say exactly where that number will come in, but, so when you get done, when I added it up, I didn't add in that 1,000 and 200, so figure the total cost of this project's going to be in that 20, 21, hopefully not too much over 21 by the time you add in excise tax. But that's where these numbers are going to come in with what I got here, so. Is there any questions on your parts? And just so you know, if we do approve it, the way I'm going to do this is, we're going to do the projector and the screen out there first, get that little lion fruit out of the way, and then I'm going to have to work with the staff and find out all your times that we're using this room, because that's going to be a little bit more work when we start pulling these cables through. So we're going to have to work with your schedule a little bit, and Chris and I are going to have to figure out when we can have a couple of good, long days where we can get everything done. Because once we start tearing, it's not a smooth process where I can get you back up to running halfway, that type of thing. I want to try and get you knocked out, or at least get you back to a spot, so we can make the operation, so.
You think in a couple, two, three, four days?
Um, yeah, I suppose we start it like that, but it might be, we do these two things, we have to wait a week, get the other, I need to also see when I can get all the other parts in. I don't know the exact shipping of when I can get everything. I don't want to start tearing things apart and waiting on parts. I want to probably get everything in first, then work with you, so we'll work on that timeframe, too. Like, I have the projector, and I think that screen, that probably won't be much of a problem at all. I'd probably have them in a few days, and I'm going to try and see if we can't work something out. President's Day weekend is a three-day weekend for us. I wouldn't mind getting a lot of work done then if we could, if it works out. I don't know, I guess even all the parts come in, and I'll work with staff about getting a key and all that good stuff, so however that would work with you folks. Other than that, that's everything I have.
Is this thing here, is that connected to the system, this?
Yeah, and what we're going to do when we do this other one, this cable will go away, we'll take and run a Cat 5, but what we'll try and do is, we're going to still need to have a runner, this is the only way to bother, because it's, if they would have manufactured so that that box would have been over here when they designed the building, that would have been great, because you could have that on top of here, but it's not, so we're going to have to have something come across, but we'll run it up underneath, and then we'll possibly move this mic over here, or maybe reuse the same spot. And then that cable, this would go away here. The other thing we're going to do is, we're going to take and move those media cables, put them back there, so you don't have to have a long run running down there. We make it so it's more back in that room. Just kind of cleans it up a little bit, than when you have the cable coming running down there, when you don't need it. So that type of stuff, kind of clean that up a little bit.
When we first had the podium, the podium was...
Was it right there?
Was set there.
There we go.
And then they moved it, they wanted it over that way.
Okay, that makes sense. Now we know the rest of the story.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Further questions from the commission? No? No, we did attempt to get two bids from other entities who declined to bid, so we had, if we should put that on record, that we did attempt.
Yeah, Patty contacted these people, I contacted Mr. Ernst from River Rat, and he didn't give me a bid. I also contacted Phil Nelson from Midwest Power and Sound, and he wasn't interested in doing it, and he directed me to Midstate Audio, and I left a message for them, and they never, hadn't called me back, and that's been several days, so I did attempt to get, well, really four bids, so.
Okay. So if the commission feels we should proceed tonight, I would entertain a motion.
Rob, do you think that's sufficient for trying to get those bids?
I do. The rule is under 10, and then under 25 for services.
Okay.
And between 100 and 25, we got to take a shot at it.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'd move approval of the Anderson Telecom LLC bid for an updated sound system for $19,239.83.
Second.
I have a motion.
It's going to be over that.
It's going to be over that number, because I got a thousand, and I put those estimates, I didn't want to put them in the telecom.
Sure, sure.
They were estimates, and so it's going to be more in that 21.
So I would just put an estimation of 21?
I'll modify my bid, or my motion to estimate of $21,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid for approximately $21,000. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do that nay instead of aye.
Nay.
Well, ayes means yes.
Sure.
You got to forgive the movie stars, so.
Item number 12, Planning Commission's Structure, Appointments, and Terms. Commissioners Clemish and Healy.
We have two seats, two positions that are up for renewal come March, that we need to talk about advertising for. And then we've had discussions in the past, I guess, of whether we should have two commissioners, one commissioner, the number of people on the board on the Planning Commission, so I think that's kind of open for discussion, I guess, before we start advertising.
Further comments from the other commissioners?
I guess, you know, I think it's important to keep our Planning Commission, you know, around the nine number. This is an opportunity, and one of the few we have, where citizens from all over the county can get involved in county affairs as a Planning Commissioner, so I guess I'm in favor of keeping it at nine, whatever we decide, because it gives us a diverse amount of people from all over, an opportunity. And the smaller that the board gets, the less opportunity it is for people to get involved, and I think it's a good thing to have a larger Planning Commission, myself.
I'd have to concur with Commissioner Clemish on the nine. As always, somebody that's sick, somebody that's on vacation, or, so the nine would be a nice number to keep.
There's a lot of stuff we need to tackle coming up with the Planning Commission. You know, we're re-adopting our zoning ordinance now, and then there's also, the comprehensive plan needs to be looked at, and other things, and there's some good discussion that can be had with a larger group of people.
Commissioner Kettering, do you have a comment?
No.
No comment? I have a comment. I would be a proponent of going to seven, and with one commissioner, so essentially now we have nine people on our Planning Commission. Two of them are commissioners, so essentially we have seven from the public. If we go to seven and have one commissioner, we have six from the public. Every year, two are up, so you have a nice even rotation of folks in the community as well. The challenge with, to me, with having two commissioners on the Planning Commission is those same two commissioners sit on the Board of Adjustment, which is five members. So you have two people who are hearing the same issue twice. State law says we have to have at least one, and that is certainly force some carryover and overlap, but for those reasons, I would be a proponent of going to seven with one commissioner, and this year, having a commissioner as a liaison to help set some of the priorities for amendments.
I know that's some of the discussion we had, and I agree that the redundancy of having two commissioners is probably unnecessary, but I think in this coming year especially, but with some plan changes, I think it is nice to have a second commissioner on for, you know, more work session, things that we talked about, just to have more congruency with the County Commission. That position would not have voting power, is what I would see. It'd be more just an advisory position. If we went down, you know, if we did drop one commissioner.
I guess I'm an advocate, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? I mean, it's worked like this for a long time. I'm in favor of having two commissioners on, because if the Planning Commission proposes, you know, a change or something like that, and it gets to the County Commission, and only one person is hurt, and it gets kicked back down and is not accepted by the County Commission, that's a lot of lost work and a lot of lost time. So I guess I don't, you know, I've served on the Planning Commission, you know, longer than anyone else on this board. When I first started, it was at 13, and I thought, I thought that was fine. There was a lot of good discussion. It's since gone from 13 to 11, and now nine, and the more people that we cut, the less opportunity it has for people to become involved. So I guess if I'm still going to be serving on the Planning Commission, you know, hopefully we can keep it at nine. You know, our highway, we have two highway liaisons, and they don't have monthly meetings like our Planning Commission does. Sometimes we have two meetings a month when we're working on projects, so I'm an advocate of giving the public an opportunity to get involved and keeping it at nine with two commissioners.
I would agree with you, Commissioner Clemish, to keep the nine and keep two commissioners. Don Kettering and I have both been in surgery the last year. If you have, go down to one, somebody goes into surgery for six, eight, 10, 12 weeks, and that happens to be that commissioner, you have zero. So I believe that we still need two.
I haven't, and I haven't had an opportunity to discuss with this with the Planning Commission recently, before this just came up, and our Planning Commission was in favor of keeping it at this number, and they, they want two commissioners on there, because sometimes, you know, the commissioners can guide the Planning Commission. We get, we give directives to the Planning Commission. Sometimes that's lost in translation, and when you have two of us there, that can really help facilitate communication between the two boards.
Further comments? I would entertain a motion at this time.
Madam, I move that we keep the Planning Commission structure the same, and we advertise for two new positions for April.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to keep the Planning Commission at the current number of nine with two commissioners, and to go ahead and advertise for two positions, which we will name in April. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Clemish?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Kettering?
No.
Most?
No. Motion passes. We will stay with nine commissioners, and is there a deadline of which we need to have those applications in? For, it would probably be our first March meeting. Is that good, Gary, the first March meeting? Okay, so we need to have the deadline the Wednesday before the first March meeting, which I don't have my calendar.
I'm trying to find one here.
So it's the...
Do they take over in March or in April?
We'd need to appoint them by... Well, we could do it April 7th, and then they could serve, well, I'm sorry, yeah. April 14th is a Planning Commission meeting, so April 7th would be a County Commission meeting. But I think we could advertise now until, I don't know, about the 30th or something?
The 30th of...
31st of March?
March.
31st of March?
Would be the deadline for submitting.
Yeah, that should give plenty of time, should it not?
That's two months. I would prefer that we actually approve them at a March meeting, so they don't just have one week turnaround to know they're on the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So either we...
17th.
Is that our second meeting in March? So the Wednesday before, that second meeting in March is the deadline. All right, we'll go with that. And that gives them plenty of time to adjust to the new role of being on the Planning Commission. All right, further discussion about structure, appointments, terms? I think we covered everything there? Yes? Okay, we will move on to item 13, Property and Casualty Insurance. Mr. Smith.
Thank you for your time. You've got in your packet, I delivered to Patty. The thing we have to do tonight, workers' compensation coverage is in place and paid for, we just need to agree to cover the volunteers that are in the emergency management, rescue, search and rescue department, Paul Shorshick's department. And you've got that list of volunteers, and if they're on that list, then they would be covered under workers, South Dakota workers' compensation. If they're not on that list, and they volunteer, they would not be. And Paul evidently has a system to keep that updated. So I need you to approve them being covered under your policy under workers' compensation coverage. And it's just something we have to do every year, done it for the last three or four years, and it's been approved. we have to do every year. Done it for the last three or four years, and it's been approved. That would be, if nothing else tonight, that we need to get that done for sure. Yes or no?
Okay. Do I, anyone have questions on the list of folks that were attached to this?
I'd move to accept personnel contact lists submitted by Roger Smith for liability insurance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the list of workers submitted by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The list is approved.
Okay, good. That's in the minutes, and so that's, they're good to go. I delivered to Patty the insurance for, not everything but workers' compensation, because we had that already, and that was paid for. The property casualty insurance, which is your liability, property insurance, vehicles, equipment, so forth. I've given that policy to Patty and a billing. Now, the sum total of your last year's coverages versus this year, you've had about a 2% increase, about four grand plus. So it's better than I thought when I was here here a month ago. Your workers' compensation has gone down. Keep up the good work, or good luck, or whatever it might be. And the other policy, the liability insurance has gone up, as I discussed here about a month ago. And the bad part, sad part of it all is, we've got a different deductible on the public official policy. It was $10,000, and as of January 1, it went to $25,000 deductible. And I have no, you're part of a group of about 20 counties. You're not the only county that's having issues with public official claims. And so that piece of the pie has been seriously eroded over the last two, three, or four years, not only in Yankton County, but elsewhere. And I don't have numbers for elsewhere, but I know, of course, what goes on in Yankton County. And there's still claim activity going on. There's still claims open, and attorneys are going back and forth and so forth. So it's not as bad as I thought it might be. And then I, when I talked here about a month ago, I thought it was going to be worse than that. But the help, of course, was on the workers' compensation, going down about 10 grand. Just the other one, it went up about 14 grand. So you're off about 2%. And what my plan would be, try to bring those down. I put some notes here that I'm going to get some quotes, and I don't have them tonight, for different deductibles on your property and your equipment. That would save some money, and it'd be worthwhile. It won't save tens of thousands of dollars, but it'll probably save some thousands of dollars. And I'll bring those numbers to you, and you can just say, hey, leave alone, or no, let's adjust it, or whatever. I first thought of putting those deductibles in place, I thought the increase was going to be way more than it was. Anytime we get a policy that's about the same year to year, the total, I'm not happy with it, but it's better than what I expected. But we have some options. We can maybe reduce that some and get it back down less than last year, which is, which is good. But you'd have to give up some deductibles to do that. And I'll get that sooner than later, and maybe in March, I'd come back to a meeting and give you some numbers. Then I'm going to sit down with the department heads and go through their vehicles and see if some of those vehicles just need liability rather than full coverage. And we'll maybe have some savings there.
That's mainly with the highway department, as you spoke to you, that's the one with a vast majority.
That's right. Mike and I have gone through the equipment values, and we've got that in the mill. He reduced the values a fair amount, and so there'll be some savings there for sure, some thousands of dollars probably. And then we can, maybe weed out some comp and collision coverages. That'll save, save some more. So if we get it down less than last year, that would really be good. And I think we can, it just depends on what deductibles you might want to go with. So I would answer any questions about any of this.
Like the, like the vehicles, like the trucks and the cars, what is the deductible all the same on all of them?
Everyone's, if they have comp and collision, they're all the same. It's 500 deduct one comprehensive, and 1,000 deduct one collision. So we just, we'll get a price for a little higher deductible and see if it's palatable and see what's saying.
500 and 1,000?
500 and 1,000, on those that have it. The sheriff's department has it for sure. They, that's, we should have, ambulance does, Paul Shorshick does. Those exposed departments have coverage. Lastly, I have a statement of values I need to share you to sign. I'd give it to you, have you look it over, and then I could come and see you some other time to go over and make sure, rather than just sign it and me take it with me.
Okay, I'll look it over.
Does it just take your guys on the property insurance?
Oh, okay.
I'll sign last year to see your signature.
Yep, I'll do that. Thank you.
That's just, that just goes to my file, your file, and the insurance companies.
Any questions on insurance?
Yeah, I got a question, Roger. So on, as you go down through these lists of people, you see team members, I think peer, I'm wondering if you have more people, does the cost of the insurance go up?
You know, I didn't bring it with me, but you know, the cost to cover these people is like a couple, $200, $300. I mean, it's-
Per person?
No, total. I mean, I should, I'm misquoting, misstating, but it's not very much. Jeepers, there's a lot of people on there. Some are on double. So if you just take them individually, it's not, I thought it'd be a huge deal.
Okay.
But it isn't, hasn't crossed. Next time I see you, I can tell you exactly what the cost is. I don't have it with me. But it's not much. So with that, I'll thank you very much for your time.
Roger, Roger, could you, could you figure us out the difference between a 500 and 1,000 deductible to like a 2,500 and 1,000? I know, I know people have done that, and they've saved a lot of money. And maybe some of those old vehicles we got probably aren't worth $2,500.
Well, that's right. That's, we're going to cut some off. I'm sure we'll be able to do that. But I'll have a couple, two, three options to give you the, kind of the ballpark number to save. The higher deductible, it gets less and less of a savings.
Because like, say, a $130,000 snowplow truck, 2,500 and 1,000, $1,500, and if you can save a ton of money, 10 trucks.
Yeah. On a $10,000 vehicle, it won't be much. Yeah, on a bigger one, it would be.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
We are three minutes ahead of schedule. We have a hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock, which you want to go ahead and talk about guidance on Section 513 in those three minutes? So item 17, we are skipping down to-
So we've had some previous discussions on plating, and you've talked about possibly moving towards having one single process. And one of the things that's still in the ordinance also, and it's sometimes, from what I see in the files, sometimes been followed, sometimes not, but is under 513, number six, it says that, or under number five, actually, an additional dwelling unit is allowed within a farmstead upon approval of the building permit application, if it's to be occupied by other members of the farming, family farm unit, provided the property is not transacted or prepared, planted, or described for transaction. And that the zoning administrator may allow in six, construction of a single multifamily dwelling unit not in conformance with this provision, only on those lands organized as 501D. Next week, next meeting, we actually are going to have a plat that's being brought in back from 2016. We don't know exactly what occurred at that time, but it was signed by everybody but the county commission. And so this family member now is wanting to move this plat forward and get that last signature and get it recorded. So it's, it's four-plus acres on an existing farmstead. So just wondering what your thoughts are on leaving this in in the future, or if we, if we go to one process, you know, how you want to deal with these farm unit plats requests?
I think we talked about it at planning and zoning prior to you. And I think the general consensus was, if it's, you know, clear as day that this is a farmstead, you know, then it's administrative. If you had any questions on whether it would qualify, then bring it forward to the planning to look at it. But, and that's how I read it, I guess. And it really is just up to, if you have concerns, if it's a farmstead or not.
No. I think that makes sense, and so, but it does, you know, it will make a difference on whether or not we continue then with administrative minor plats in the future versus just going to one process, where they all go through planning commission and county commission.
And maybe we, when we look at that, maybe the plats, just to stay, stay the same, maybe those come forward for approval, but there's, you know, no variances or anything tied to that, if it's a farmstead, or if it's an existing farmstead.
And what we discussed is it's different if there's a blank barren section of field, and somebody wants to do that, then that would still go through the variance process. But like you said, where there's a farmstead, I think that's an administrative.
Because I have heard from one of the surveyors already that had some concerns about getting rid of the minor plats. Obviously, time-wise, it's a lot quicker if it's just a zoning administrator approval. But I did, I know we've, like I said, had discussion, and John Harper brought it up, about, you know, having one consistent process. We've had a lot of issues with title blocks, which one of them, even tonight, is appearing, that, where people just get confused on what title block they should be putting in for zoning administrator, for planning commission, for county commission. And we're always having issues with that. So.
I must just be a step behind plat, because it says that provided the property is not transacted, prepared, platted, or described for transaction. So does this mean this is a different type of plat that you technically can't sell the property? Am I-
No, no. And this talks about actually a building permit and being transacted that way. But it also brought up this question of administrative approval for plats, to clarify.
I guess I kind of was touching on probably more item paragraph three, Section 513.3.
Oh, okay. You're tying three and five together. Gotcha. See, I told you, I was just one step behind. I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're not contradicting-
Because, yeah, there is a difference. Three would be, you know, you can go ahead on an existing farmstead. Five is the additional home on a-
So then, we get to the point, now we have a plat, and does that house have to be setbacks?
For on an existing farmstead?
Yes.
Yeah, because typically, when people are coming forward with that, they've got a, let's say, a quarter with an acreage on it that's not separated.
Yep.
And they want to-
Do they have to be setback so far from the other house and so far from the property line? Because I'm just trying to foresee all the little issues that once we set the precedent, and then it's like, well, it's not meeting setbacks, so we can do this. But since you're not meeting setbacks, we need a variance for that.
Well, and I think that's one of the concerns with not having multiple plating processes. That's, that's why I was bringing it to your attention.
Okay.
I would say no, off the top of my head.
No to what?
To the, if they have to meet setbacks. Because typically, you're going to square off the tree line.
Okay.
Well, setbacks are what, 70, 75 feet? So I would say, my guidance was that they should, because they're coming in and saying, I'm building a house here. Okay, so they should have a plan together. And I think that they should meet the setbacks for all of these, because otherwise it's-
Not always. Sometimes they're just-
For, which one are you on, three?
Like on three. Sometimes you're just taking a lot. Your house could be turnkey.
What's your, what's your guidance, Gary? Well, are you talking on one that's already existing? Or, yeah, well, that would be different if it was their pre-zoning. That's, that's different if it's their pre-zoning. What's your guidance on this?
That's exactly, yeah.
So when we flip forward to 1503, erection of more than one principal structure on a lot. So that's essentially what we're doing.
Right.
Is in any district, more than one structure, housing of permitted or permissible principal use may be erected on a single lot, provided yard and other requirements of this ordinance shall be met for each structure. So it is in there. So again, we have to remember that it's, it's not just you can, you can plunk a house wherever you want it. You still have to meet setbacks. And if you don't meet setbacks, you have to get a variance for it.
Exactly.
And we're all clear on that. Does that make sense?
Is that your guidance?
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to come in and plat something out, and there's a, you know, abandoned farmstead, or there's, there's a place, and somebody wants to build a new house, and they're going to plat it out, it should absolutely meet all the setbacks before we do it, or it's a variance process, which I think we should be discouraging.
I would love for my kids to build a house right next to me, but certainly 75 feet away.
Or further.
Well, my cookie jar will always be full.
Sounds good. We'll keep working towards, towards those changes in the future, and we'll, we'll make sure that everybody's covered.
Sounds good. Thank you. So item 17 is done. We will now go back to item 14, which is a hearing of the Yankton County Commission adoption of zoning ordinance and MAP, Yankton County Ordinance 2020, ordinance number 20-01, that was scheduled for 7 o'clock and is now 7:06.
So back at the end-of-year meeting, as you remember, you adopted a temporary zoning ordinance and MAP, and now you're moving forward on first reading of the adoption of the previous ordinance, number 16, adoption. And so that's on, on the agenda tonight for that first reading.
All right. So I will open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience care to make a public comment on the re-adoption of our current ordinance with no changes? There being no, no interested parties for public comment. Public comment is closed. Would the commissioners like to make any comments at this time?
I think we need to carefully define what no changes were, Jerry.
Very good. Would one of you like to comment, or would you like me to?
Why don't we, Gary, why don't you explain what you did he, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair?
Fair enough, yes. Fair enough.
Basically, we just took Article 16, took out all the dates, all the publication notices, anything that had to, and just cleaned it up, made a clean copy, called it Ordinance 2020. And that's, that's what we're moving forward on. No changes to the ordinance, no changes to the MAP.
Okay, so no policy changes, nothing, not a-
No setback changes.
Setback, no building sizes, nothing were changed?
Just re-adopting in a, in a clean manner.
Okay.
So the governor has kind of stepped out and said she's interested in some kind of statewide program, which I don't think any of us really know what is. Will that all have to be adjusted if that is approved?
Correct. One, you know, we've had a discussion for a while that once this moves forward and everything is completed, that we would start looking at any changes that we feel need to be made to the ordinance at that time.
Further comments from the commission? All right. We will have a second reading of this at our next meeting.
Correct.
Do we need to, we don't make a motion or anything on this one?
Do we need a motion to adopt the first reading, state's attorney?
You need a motion to adopt it?
To accept it or anything. It's fine. We've done it. It's in the record, and we're good. Okay.
That's how we do it?
All right. All right, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now in Board of Adjustment. Item fifteen, seven oh five hearing, it's now seven ten for Bernice Houck and Steve Novak, variance and plat.
This is a plat and variance of lot one and lot two of Charles Novak addition in the north half of the north half of the northeast of section twenty-three, township ninety-four north, range fifty-seven west. Basically, we're splitting one lot into two, eighteen point five two nine acres and eighteen point five oh eight, oh one acres for the family. And planning commission recommends approval of this plat and variance.
Questions by the commissioners. I would open it up for public comment at this time. Would anybody like to speak? Please come forward. Are you speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Tom Reynolds. I'm an attorney at the Kennedy Law firm here in Yankton. I represent Stephen Novak, Sheila Woodward, another attorney in town, represented Bernice Houck, represents Bernice Houck. Sheila attended the planning commission hearing on behalf of both clients and I'm here on behalf of both clients today. The planning commission didn't approve, I believe it was seven zero vote, the, the variance. We're asking for a variance below the twenty acre lot size. We're very close, as he just stated. The, it's my understanding, my, Sheila did a little research on it, it's my understanding that Yankton County does not count, well, let me start over. If this piece of land was anywhere else, it would be forty acres because there's no roads abutting, abutting it and we'd be able to split it, we wouldn't need a variance. Because there's a road abutting it to the north and to the east, we need that variance. So that, that's the hardship right there. If they had owned this land in a different part of that section, they could just go ahead and split it. So that's what we're asking to do. We're really close. The land is currently zoned agricultural, they use it agricultural and they intend to continue to use it agricultural. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment? There being none, public comment is closed. Commissioners, further discussion?
I can just reiterate, I guess, what, what Mr. Reynolds said and that, that was the discussion that we had at planning and zoning level. And the, the landowner to the south, I believe, rents all of this currently. There's a family, one brother and sister own this parcel and they, one wants to sell it, the other one doesn't. So this was the simplest.
Compromise.
Compromise forward, so.
There's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Do we need a motion for the variance and the plat, two separate motions, correct?
Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve the Houck-Novak variance request.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Healy.
Yes.
Clemmish.
Yes.
Swenson.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Los.
Yes. Motion passes, variance is approved. I would entertain a motion for the plat.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Clemmish.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Swenson.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Los.
Yes. Motion passes, plat is approved. I would entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go back into regular session. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes, we are now back in regular session. Item number sixteen, Jason Tramp, plat.
We have plat, lot two of parcel three of Corey Pines addition in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west. Originally, this was all one parcel three, lot one got platted and now we're looking at plating lot two.
Questions from the commission?
Is this the one, you mentioned earlier, there was an issue with the title block.
Yeah, this was the one that was going to be administrative approval and, but he added a county commission signature block, so we're bringing it to you for signature.
You don't see any issues with this, Gary?
No, we do not.
Pretty straightforward.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, plat is approved. All right, moving on to item eighteen, HR consultant.
Good evening, commissioners.
Welcome.
Dan Oakland with Alternative HRD. We had sent a couple documents for you to look at, hopefully you have those. One is, I just want to talk about both of those. The first one would be the HR risk assessment that we had undertaken. It was a project that we just worked with. Tried to sit, or we sat down with, I think, most all of the department heads and gathered some information, filled over a lot of documents and basically assessed HR human resource functions with the county. And so as we go through, and we do that with an organization, I guess one of the things we look at is, is there anything that needs immediate attention, immediate fixing? We'll say that we didn't find, I won't, I'd say we did not find anything that we found really alarming or that needs, needs some immediate attention necessarily. We found a number of things that we think are considerations for you, things to think about, things to look at over the next, whether it's over the next year, over the next two or three years. With the assessment, and I guess we can go through a couple ways, I can either go through it or I can answer questions as you have or both. But the ass, the assessment, we essentially broke down, we looked at and we asked questions, looked at information from, what are you doing before we hire somebody? When we're posting jobs, when we're recruiting, when we're screening? We looked at, okay, once we've got that, how are we making the selection? How are we interviewing? How are we making the hiring decisions? Who's making the hiring decisions? Once people are hired, we looked at, how is, how are people orientation, onboarding, bringing them on, the training? We looked at performance management, we looked at compensation and benefits. So we looked at several different aspects of the human resource function. So within each of those, we noted some things that we see as things, that we see as in-place, doing very well. We noted some things that are potential weaknesses or could be strengthened in most all areas. I think we had at least one or more recognition or considerations for improving. And so those are things that, some of those are, some of those recommendations had to do with training. For example, department heads and managers, we suggest have more frequent training, some of those things, just to make sure things are consistent between or among departments. Some things are more practical things to look at. For example, still doing essentially paper applications and people can download an application, but as technology progresses, at some point, they're wanting people to be able to apply online, having an, either a human resource information system or management system. So more things can be done through technology. We're still using paper timekeeping systems, a number of things like that that, as we go forward, may want to consider upgrading. So, it's like I say, I can go through section by section or if there are particular questions you'd like me to address, we can do that.
Sure. We recently adopted a county mission and vision statement.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, what's your thought? Should that be incorporated in, to the handbook rewrite?
Yes, I, I think so. And I think it's good for, because I look at a handbook, it covers policies, but it's also a, a tool to acclimate, to help culture. So I think it's one of those things that should be included. The thing I, what I would say, the current handbook has, it's obviously policies, it also includes job descriptions, it also includes a lot of the human resource forms. My suggestion is that the policy handbook be the policy handbook, but job descriptions, I think they're important, but by including them there, it makes it, in my mind, harder to make changes, to make adjustments. I think job descriptions are more of a management and a department head tool and wouldn't necessarily need to be combined with the handbook. And the same with forms for hiring, for termination, for performance. To me, those are more management and administrative type forms that don't necessarily need to be published with the handbook, so. I would suggest though that, I think the handbook that we have was originally in two thousand and five. There's certainly been some updates since then, but it's the way things change. Some of the things that need to be in there, for example, Family and Medical Leave Act is addressed in there, but the original Family and Medical Leave did not have, did not have for military service-related leave. And so I don't think that's addressed in there. There have been some additional laws, the Veterans' Preference in Hiring Law, things addressing nursing mothers in the workplace. And there are just a number of things that should be at least addressed in there. When I talked to department heads, though, I, there didn't seem to be a lot of conflict necessarily over particular policies that are in there. So I didn't see that there was much divisiveness. I sometimes see that in organizations. The, I do think that with the number of employees you have, with the size of the county, that you need to at least be looking seriously within the next two to three years maybe at, at potentially hiring a full-time or a dedicated human resource professional. The auditor's office does a good job in keeping the documents, keeping track of things, compliance. Where we see that having a dedicated HR professional might be helpful to you is in getting consistency, for example, assisting all departments with hiring. Not that they would make the decision, but they could facilitate all that. So we're maybe trying to make sure that everyone is doing things consistently, appropriately. One of the things right now for that position could potentially, not that they're necessarily an employee advocate, but they're a person where employees can go to with questions and, and resources if they have issues with benefits. Right now, it's pretty much, pass them to call the broker or the insurance company. So having somebody in-house that could address some of those things too can be beneficial. But obviously, that's a, that's a decision too, because that, I'm, I'm looking forward and would be a str, more of a strategic decision. There are some administrative things that we made recommendations on. Some of the things, one thing, for example, personnel files, they're, they're secure. You know, the only person that really sees them is Patty or somebody in the auditor's office who's doing that. On the other hand, and so sometimes it seems like it doesn't make sense to have to separate things if there's only one or two people seeing them. But on the other hand, the purpose of files, for example, if a supervisor or department head wants to review an employee's file, we should be able to pull out just performance-related things for them to review so that medical or confidential information is maintained separately. So there are some things that I think should be attended to. Any, any questions?
So we have, of course, elected officials and appointed officials. So how do you bring them all together and work as a co- you see group?
You know, and I guess one of, it, it's, it's, it can be a challenge because one of the things sort of by nature with county, and not just counties, but public entities, you have sort of most different business units that have to communicate to some degree but don't necessarily work together. So obviously, the sheriff's department has a different needs, twenty-four seven, where things then, maybe the treasurer's office. Ideally, I think it's still helpful to have, if everyone is following the same, for employees, pretty much following the same policies and procedures. Even in that, yeah, there can be some differences because what happens, schedules are going to be different, holiday pay is going to have to be different for county, for people that work here in the office when the, when the holiday, when the office is closed, they may get holiday pay. The sheriff's deputies are still working, the highway department is still out working and so there can be some different policies for different departments or the way it's applied. But we've worked with counties where they have three or four different policy handbooks and that makes it awfully hard to, we, at least we recommend if we can have one handbook or one basic policy, there may be some differences within that for different departments. But I think it's easier for you to keep track of and for you to oversee. You know, frankly, there are some policies that then, you know, you're trying to make policies that apply to all employees. Some of your elected officials, yeah, some of those things won't necessarily apply to them, even though probably want them to sort of utilize and enforce them. A lot of it has to do with getting everyone to do the same thing, really a lot has to do with just communication and, and trying to make sure that, understand the rationale for it. In terms of the handbook, because I also sent a document to you, a very preliminary draft, rough draft, it's not at the point where I say this is what I recommend. What we tried to start doing is taking.
Is that what this is or is it something else?
That's, okay, that would be the, the, the assessment that we did under HR.
This isn't the rough draft of the handbook, okay.
That.
It's on there.
Later, if you keep paging through, it's there.
So a lot of pages, okay, got it. Fourteen in our pack.
Okay.
Got it.
So yeah, it'd be about page fourteen.
Okay.
And so that is where I started working on a rough draft of an updated employee handbook. I've taken a lot of the things that you had, I've started to add some other things that I felt you should consider. And so still working through and, and want to do some comparisons. So I won't say that's, that's not at the point where.
So do you want us just to kind of review this then and see what we think of it?
I think that would be the, look at it if, because we haven't done anything, haven't proofed it, haven't, it needs some formatting, it needs some, and there's obviously going to be some policies that, what I also want to do and perhaps for next meeting is give you a list of what's chang, you know, what's different about this versus what you have. So I can say, okay, this policy is on this page in the new version, this policy, here's the change or here's the same, it's, you know, so.
I definitely think the mission statement.
Yeah.
Would need to be added in to this handbook.
That's on the website, isn't it?
Yes. Mission statement on the website, yes.
So I'm going to pull that out, okay.
I mean, not just my opinion, did the rest of the board feel?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay. And I think to your point, Don, when we did that mission statement, it's a shared sense of values for both elected and not elected and really all the employees, you know, hopefully they can use that as guidance for. know, hopefully they can use that as guidance for behavior.
Other questions at this time?
Your, your opinion is that we should, this document really should be the one document, we shouldn't have, you know, a bunch of different policies out there. The reason I ask that is, a couple, I'm getting ahead of myself, but we were talking about a code of conduct.
Mm-hmm.
Now, would you recommend that be its own separate standalone, or would you recommend that somehow be rolled into the handbook? Because, you know, what you had mentioned, and it made sense to me, is you don't want to have a document here, and a document here, and a document here, that aren't really, you know-
Right.
-synchronized.
And in my mind, a code of conduct, well, especially when it's, it's directed at, well, commissioners, department heads, boards.
Sure.
I think that certainly could be.
Okay.
The handbook probably that we're talking about is primarily focused at employees.
Okay.
So, it's not-
Sure.
Wouldn't be necessarily inappropriate to include it there, but I think it could easily be a separate document.
Okay. The, you know, the one issue I can see is that, you know, the handbook is slightly different than the code of conduct.
Yep.
And then how do those two interact?
Well, I would think we'd want to try to make sure there's not inconsistencies between the two.
Sure, sure, yeah.
It may be directed at different people, but-
Would it more, make more sense to, for a co, you know, that to just be an amendment in the handbook that, you know, an elected official or a department head would get? You get this one with this conduct in there?
Sure.
And then, and then you get one document, and it's not several ones?
You could certainly reference it in there, or include it, or we could include it in the appendix.
Okay, yeah.
Does she have comments?
I'd just like to have a copy, have these copied. Patty, can you make a copy of this?
I think, are you, when you get a little further into the amendments, are you, did you say you'll provide a copy that kind of highlights-
I will, yeah.
Ties back your study back to-
I'll try to have a, sort of a master that says, okay, this policy is such a page on your last-
Right.
Page two on your last one, it's unchanged. This is policy from page three, but we changed significantly or slightly, so. And then there will be some, if there are some specific changes, for example, it's a new policy dealing with, well, dealing with nursing mothers, you know, that's something that I want to make sure, you're very aware before you vote on, or ask to vote on anything, you know, if there's any new policies, or if there's something that I'm suggesting that you change.
Right.
And, and there will be some changes. For, for example, one of the areas in, maybe you've had a policy on equal employment that addresses discrimination and harassment. You know, over the last ten, fifteen, twelve, fifteen years, there's been some significant changes in protected classifications, and what's practical, and as far as court cases and so on, on reporting, on retaliation, so on, we're going to increase language. So there will be some changes there that you will, that we'll make note of and make you aware of, so.
Your focus has primarily been on the handbook, but have you looked over our process for employee training, and notifications, and postings, and things like that, and how are we doing in those areas?
So, and some of that I addressed in the, the initial document, that HR risk assessment.
Sure.
I think in most cases, the postings go through, I guess I still call it job service, but the state. I think there are opportunities to do more postings using social media, and online, online job, job boards, like indeed in the last, or I think that can, probably get, and still certainly using the state site, that can increase the number. Some of those are more difficult. One of the things that, that organizations would look at would be maybe an online applicant tracking system. So those are things that we have a number of clients, that way jobs can be posted automatically, or when we post it, it's posted to our website, it's posted to the state.
And I guess I was talking about, like, notification for employee, those postings of those, because, you know, we have employees spread out in highway department, and soil conservation, and 4-H, and, and, you know, just to make sure all those are covered.
Sure.
So.
And again, there's a couple ways to look at that, too. One is expanding the, to the, your website, so that it includes-
Sure.
An internal, and having a lot of those documents potentially on there. But all of those things obviously take somebody to put together and somebody to do that.
Sure.
So, okay.
Further questions?
All right.
That was very good.
We'll keep working on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we want to discuss the Good Friday, Native American slash Columbus Day, or should we delay that to when we adopt the handbook? The first one is-
Probably when we, when we adopt the handbook, I think, as long as-
I was going to say, the first one is more, because that one comes up March, April timeframe. Last year, we were in March, so we can delay a little bit longer on that one. If we get too close, we can decide on Good Friday. All right. We will move on to item nineteen, Code of Conduct for Commissioners, Department Heads, The code of conduct that is in our packet, we have seen before, I believe we heard it twice last year, and it is from Pennington County. They have okayed for us to essentially copy it, if we want to, word for word. So essentially, the only thing that was changed is the word Pennington is now Yankton, and we have our logo on this version. So at this time, are there any comments, questions, additions, anything that would be missing from this that we need to add?
Have we sent this to the department heads and other elected officials for their recommendations?
No.
Okay. I, I guess I, I read through it, and I think it's really good. I guess I would recommend that we send this out to the people that it would affect, and ask them for their comments on it. You know, the other elected officials and department heads. I'd hate to, you know, just approve something with, without giving them their chance to, they might have some really good suggestions for us.
Other comments?
I'd just like to add something for your, um, not very long here, but when Commissioner Dan Clemish was chairman, I'm going to read this real slow so you can get it. When Commissioner Dan Clemish was the chairman, and the public comment period came up, he would always say, "No personal attacks." Well, two weeks ago, the first public comment, the state's attorney came up and made several comments that he didn't like my emails. Then Chairman Losch chimed in with the public comment, saying she didn't like my emails. So I want to thank both of them for, for bringing that up. And I've had a lot of talk with several constituents over the last two weeks, and those constituents would also like to thank both of those people, Chairman Losch and State's Attorney Clemish, for showing their real true colors. And the true colors are that what they showed for Gary Swenson was their hatred for him, not his bias, but their hatred, and their hatred for what he stands for. Now, just a little bit more, I have a quote from one of the women, she's eighty-six years old, not going to give you her name, but her quote was, "If you didn't like Gary Swenson's emails, then maybe both of you should be like Hillary Clinton, and just push the delete button like everybody else does, including her granddaughter that's five, great-granddaughter that's five." So, that's up to you. But I didn't respond, because you're not supposed to respond at public comment to anyone. I thought it was inappropriate. So, I too would say, besides what the lady said about her quote, you can be like Hillary and just delete the emails if you don't like them. Thank you very much for showing your true colors of your hatred for me.
Thank you, Gary.
You're very welcome.
Any other comments from the commissioners at this time?
You know, one, one other thing, dependent on after we get the, we send this out to the other department heads, and they give us their opinions on it, they, like I said, they may have some great ideas, and the other elected officials. Like the HR person said, if we could somehow incorporate this into the handbook somehow, I, I don't know if that's possible, but we should just, you know, make sure the two of them mesh, and so they're not, you know, this doesn't say one thing, and the handbook says another. We're, we're really going to have to make sure that there's similar language and similar direction in both of these. I think it's good material in both, but how they come together is going to be important.
I do. Gary, I'm a little surprised I wasn't included in that group of people. I, I think it's not a hatred for you, I think it might be a hatred for some of the things that you do and represent that, that are, appear to be rather ridiculous, I guess, and I guess we just would, I, I can speak for those two, but I, I myself would like to see that part of your behavior changed. But you don't ask me if you don't want it.
Commissioner Healy, any comments?
I agree with Don. I have no hatred for anyone. But I do not enjoy. I do not enjoy getting emails that say you would not remember this on Broadway, because you were born someplace else. And there is a picture of bimbo burgers. I do not enjoy that. I do not have hatred for the person who sent it, but when I show that to my children, and they ask me, "Mom, why do you put yourself through this?", I say, "It's for the good of the county." I do not enjoy getting taglines that say, "Here are the real women who march for our rights," insinuating that I do not. I do not enjoy being called a carpetbagger. I do not enjoy having pictures of pigs sent to me that sit on the border of a country to keep Islamists out of the country. I think that is highly inappropriate. And I look at every one of the twenty or so emails I get every day. I do not have a hatred for Commissioner Swenson. But I do not feel any person in our position should have to tolerate it from their fellow coworkers. If I was in a working environment, I would be fired on the spot for doing things like that. So no, Commissioner Swenson, I do not have a hatred for you, but I do disagree with your approach. And I'm sorry, I broke down. And at this time, we will put this on the agenda for our next commission meeting, and I will have this sent out to all the department heads for their review and comment. Excuse me.
I'll reiterate that that is unacceptable.
I'd, I'd like to reiterate, too, is we, we got to do a better job, and, you know, we need to be leading by example in what we do. And Gary, I don't, I don't agree with your behavior.
We will now move on to item twenty, which is the Resolution of Support for Local Control. Commissioner Clemish, I'll let you take the floor.
Sure. I have a resolution in front of you. This is just meant to be a general statement, I think we can all agree how important local control is, and so I can go ahead and read that now. Do, you want me to read it, or?
That would be fine, thank you.
All right. So, the resolution is, whereas county government is best served by the governing and management of local resources by local elected officials, whereas local control is more responsive to the needs of local citizens, whereas local, local elected officials have an obligation to protect the safety, health, and welfare of their entire communities, whereas local leaders and governing bodies reduce bureaucracy, reduce taxpayer expenses, and improve the efficiencies of government operations. Whereas elected officials in the counties are closest to its citizens, are more invested in the success of the community, and are best suited to make important decisions about its operations and governance. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Yankton County Board of County Commissioners, do by here resolve that we support local control of county government. My intent was not to be combative in that, but I, I really feel that local control is important in county government. And so, if there's anybody who has any questions, try to answer them.
Well, I, I concur with the, with the concept that local control has some major advantages. But there are situations in which, when you're a part of a greater group, you have to coexist, coexist and coordinate and cooperate within that group, and that sometimes can be to a disadvantage of local control.
I think local control is really the bedrock of, you know, South Dakota and our, our law, local control for the schools, local control for the communities, local control for the cities, and local control for the counties. And this isn't, it's not intended to, you know, address any specific circumstances, but I think local control is important.
And I'd agree that local control is important, and I know there's some issues within the community right now, and I think we need to work, work on, on fixing those as a community. There could be a completely other issue ten years from now, and any time, you know, that's, that's what local control's about, is to plan, shape, and develop the future of the county. And I foresee something else is going to come up within five, ten years, and we'll be doing it all over again, but we can't ask the state to step in every time. Things don't always go smoothly, I guess. We don't want the federal government coming in at the state level all the time, just like the counties don't want the state coming in all the time, just like cities don't want the county. the county mandating what they do.
I presume that this was prompted or directed at Governor Gnome's...
This is not directed at anything in particular. This is just a statement about local control.
I think Dan said it best a while ago. If it's not broke, don't fix it. It's been working like this since when? Around that time. But I do wanna read something to you in regard to that. Preparation and planning are just as important as the mission itself, including attention to the smallest detail, as one size does not fit all. There's 66 counties in South Dakota, three to five commissioners in each one, all the way from farming to ranching to sightseeing and tourism. That quote was from General George S. Patton.
You know, I think it's just important to stand up for local control. If you start giving it up in one area, then it's... The next area's gonna happen, and then the next area after that. And if you're ready for a motion, Madam Chairman... I move approval of the resolution in support of local control in Yankton County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution in support of local control. Further discussion?
Do you have any public comments?
I'll take public comments on this.
This is Amy Williams, Irene. I guess what kind of wonder, Dan, why all of a sudden do we have to have a resolution? Isn't this what was in our books already? There's nothing adopted.
I'm not sure if there's a resolution on the Yankton County books for local control.
So...
I mean, you're a township where I'm sure you support local control of your township, do you not?
That's all we've ever had.
And this isn't meant to be combative, or it's just a general statement. I mean...
I'm not so sure about that. And I guess, I'm not sure if five people sitting here should all of a sudden decide this. I think if something like this is gonna come on, you better put it to a vote.
If you wanna refer this resolution to a vote, you certainly can.
John Johnson, Irene. You brought up history of the state. And it's true, we've been here since 1889 as a state. But you know, there's been an organization that predates statehood. Back 100 and... How many years ago? 20 years before statehood, we had a problem in this state. And they solved it by setting up basically a private police force, private prosecutors to handle problems. There are three big ranches that ran most of western South Dakota, the XIT, the Matador, and the 101 came up out here out of Texas. Brought the cattle, brought the sheep, brought the cowboys. They ran it pretty rough. They did have a problem with small ranchers. But they got together with the small ranchers. The small ranchers had some problems too. They were called the XIT, the Matador, and the 101. And they sat down and hammered out something called the Stock Growers Association, the Brand Board, predates statehood by about 20 years. When the state became a state, it stayed the Brand Board. It's still in effect now. There's one law covers cattle across the state. It's enforced differently west river than it is east river. But they still have a private police force, they still handle the prosecutions, and nobody complains. Because when the brand inspector shows up, there's gonna be a solved problem, like Texas Now, in Yankton County and in other counties, there has been a lot of contention on zoning and how the rules are and how they are interpreted. I've lost count on how many lawsuits the county has had in the last couple of years.
Yours being a couple of those.
Yes, we are in one of those. And I will be happy to get that in front of the judge. But there's been about a dozen other ones. So was Mr. Healy involved in one of those against the county. If you wanna bring him up, let's go. Now, the governor is trying economic development. One of the things... The biggest industry in this state is agriculture. The biggest industry in this state needs to develop value-added agriculture, and a big part of that is agricultural, is animal ag. Now, Joe just made a little money touting organic farming. You've gotta have fertilizer, you gotta have organic fertilizer that does not come out of a chemical plant. We can disagree on this. God knows we have. But you brought somebody in from Iowa, Senator Johnson, quality of life did, to talk about the good program they set up over there. And they set up what they called the matrix. And it basically... Is that time for me?
It was three minutes, John.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Further comments?
Louis Gadsden, Volin. You talk about local control. If we wanna have local control, the Planning and Zoning Board is made up of people that are appointed. Why don't we appoint people that are on township boards? Because let's face it, the Lake area has a totally different outlook on the world than Turkey Valley Township. And maybe you should give the local townships the control to decide what they want to have in the township and what they don't wanna have in there, just because somebody that lives 50 miles away doesn't want it. And I had somebody that lived 50 miles away sue me because I was gonna ruin their quality of life. So it happens. And this lawsuit thing where we just sue, 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 the county isn't gonna have to worry about fixing the roads because they're gonna have to sell their trucks to settle the lawsuits. So I'm thinking that when you go to replace the people on the Planning and Zoning Board, you start looking at township board members. Who better would know what to do in their area than they would?
Would anyone else in the audience care to make a public comment at this time? Yes, sir. Did I see a hand?
Kathy Weiss. I just wanna say I support this resolution, and I hope you guys all sign it.
Further? No? Public comments closed then. Further discussion on the commission's part? I will make one comment to the township control at that level has been shot down by the Supreme Court. There was a township in Turner County, I think, that tried to make local zoning, and the Supreme Court said they couldn't do it. So, I'll comment on that.
I just wanna say that voting against this resolution is like saying, "You don't like to eat apple pie."
We know you like apple pie.
I like local control. I just... It's a meaningless situation unless it's used. And how it's gonna be used is what matters. So, that's my point.
I will make a comment about it. You know, this is... It's always been my biggest fear that the state steps in and fixes what we cannot. And it is up to our community to fix what is broken. And that's a 360 view of wherever you stand on the circle. And that has always been my hope, is to be someone who can stand in the middle and help circle the troops to realize that if we can't solve our own problems, this will be one start. And then, as Joe said, I think it was Joe who said, "It'll be something else in 10 years and something else in 20." We know wind is coming. So that's gonna be a whole discussion as well. There'll be folks for it, folks against it, and somehow we have to make the process fair. Everybody deserves a fair hearing to stand up at that podium, to be listened to respectfully, all sides of the issues, a decision made in a timely manner. That is the only way I can support this, is if the five of us, and hopefully future commissioners, can commit themselves to stand neutral and to hear things evenly. I know we've got a lot of contention about what's in our ordinance today. We have folks who wanna change things, one way or the other, and all of those processes are up to us to do in a fair manner. So to say we want local control means we need to be responsible with it.
Well said.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to approve the resolution as submitted. Further discussion? We'll do a roll call load on this. Clemish?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Ketterine?
No.
Healy?
Yes.
Los? All right. Item number 21 was removed when we adapted the agenda, so we will move on to item 22,
Well, we need to pick up somewhere where we left off.
Do we wanna do a review of what we did last year?
Yeah. Where did we go last year?
I visited all the small towns, Utica, Leesterville, Gayville, Mission Hill. I didn't go to Volin, but I met with their town board individually, and I'm gonna be going up there in a couple of weeks here. And then, you, Joe, and you and I did that... We went up to Odessa Township as well, talked to people up there, and then we... You and I did Mission Hill as well.
So we did one in Mayfield, we did one at Gayville, and then Leesterville. So Utica did not get done, the Lake area did not get done last year. So we should probably start with those two.
And then maybe like if we could do something in the northeast part, maybe? Or the Volin area too? I don't know. It's hard to find places there to do something, though. I had said I was gonna do Utica, and then we got that snowstorm. Don, you and I were gonna do it, and we called it off. I guess we can... You and I can do that again, or somebody else. I guess it doesn't really matter, but I'd be willing to go out to Utica.
I'd go with Dan.
Would you like to target March?
Yeah. Can... Don, do you and I wanna just get together and find a date that works for us?
Yeah.
Okay. So April? Where do we wanna be in April? We should probably be two or three months out.
I think it's real important to visit town boards and township boards, if possible. Maybe when the... The towns have regularly scheduled meetings. I don't know how the townships do it, but it might not be a bad idea if the townships are willing to just go to one of their board meetings. I don't know if they're held regularly or how that's done. I do know the small towns do have regular meetings. And it's nice to visit with those people. I'd be willing to do either township or town boards as well.
There's some township board members in here. How often do you folks meet? Once a year?
No.
Six?
Usually, we have to have the annuals and stuff like that. The initialization coming up. But usually, probably four.
Four? Okay.
Yeah. The towns are every month. They need so...
Well, I think we've discussed too, just hosting all townships at some point. We cover that. And maybe we should just figure...
Townships, and it would be nice to invite the small towns leadership together and just... Something I find out when I'm working with the James River Water is the same exact thing we did with their water tower in Leesterville. Now Volin's doing the same thing, and they're reinventing the wheel each time. If we could get those guys together and they would talk to each other a little more, it's really the same process. And all the small towns are struggling with the same things, infrastructure, water towers, internet service. That might be something we could do and host them. That'd be maybe two... Killed two birds with one stone. It would probably... If we did that, I would almost like it to be maybe a county meeting and notice because chances are they'd have quorums of the township board, and then there would be more of us here that they could meet. But that could be an option if... I'm just throwing out ideas here.
I would say April, we should target the lake, though. We have made it out there. We've got accessory structure changes discussed at the planning and zoning, and the majority of the people those will affect are likely to be in that area.
That's a good point.
If possible, I guess I would volunteer to do one of the lake ones, because I would also like to gauge public opinion on a sewer, well, sanitary district out there. Just ask if people are... What people's thoughts are on that.
Okay. Are we good, Dan? Have some direction?
Do you want us to set dates? I know Don and I are gonna do Utica. Who would wanna do the lake? I would do the lake. I don't know. Joe, would you wanna go with me on that in the lake area?
Yeah. I'm just looking at April quick.
It's booked up with TV commercials, I see. I'm just kidding.
It's gonna be a long year, isn't it?
And to do autograph... Autograph sessions, do those count as public meetings when you're signing autographs? But Joe and I can get offline.
Yeah, I can fit something in April.
So we'll go with those two for now.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to item 23, which is the 2019 budget review. Patty had sent all of the final numbers out. Were there any comments that were in there in any of these? I know there was...
Well, the vast majority of them come out pretty dang close.
Pretty good.
But what we don't have, I don't think, unless Patty, you got this, we don't have a measure of accounts payable and accounts receivable at the beginning and at the end of the time frames. And if you're gonna watch and see exactly who overspent or underspent, you gotta know the payables and the receivables. But, you know, I was really pleased to see as many of them were within a half a percent of plus or minus of their budget.
Yep.
So I... I'm not suggesting we do any more work. I just... It's interesting to see this.
But then, if you... There's some departments like, you know, my department, the Auditors Office, the Treasurer, I mean, they're specifically... They don't receive dollars. I mean, it just comes into the general fund, and that's where the budget for the... Each of those offices are. There's like, you know, the sheriff, the ambulance, you know, the highway, they have their separate revenue, but it all comes into the general fund.
I'm just mainly interested in expenses. Who's spending inside their budget and who isn't?
It's like a naughty and nice list for Christmas, right?
And basically, that is the report that I sent you.
Any questions on that? Any concerns with any of the areas?
I gotta agree with Don. It's actually pretty close. It's actually pretty close on most of these.
All right, if there's no concerns, we will move on. Legislative update, item number 24.
Am I doing this one? All right. This isn't a comprehensive list, obviously. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go, but there's a few bills out there that we're interested in. Senate Bill 68 was to authorize a gross county tax receipt, basically a sales tax. That was referred to the 41st day and got defeated. Senate Bill 67 is the one that will reassess certain agricultural lands as non-cropland. That's one the Association is on the watch list. Another interesting one, Senate Bill 79, it would allow landowners to erect a fence across township, unimproved county or section lines. So that's a kind of a unique one. It has to allow the gate to be opened and closed. That would obviously affect townships and counties. House Bill 1079 is the one that authorizes a county to assess an administration fee for the processing of certain title applications, and that fee would be capped at $25. House Bill 1099, that is the half-cent sales tax, and it must be approved by the voters, and that's for building and maintaining jails and other things like that. So that's the one at the county convention that the State Association did a resolution of support on. The next one, House Bill 1177, doesn't affect us directly, but it's another one where it would, the state would mandate when school districts' elections occur, and they would go to the general election. That's all I have.
There are some bills out there that do affect townships, so I don't know if you township board members are alerted of those. There's one on township elections. There's one that adjusts the motor fuel tax distribution, something about a culvert fund, and I have not polled these to see what they affect. There's a motor vehicle license, something there, and I know you guys get funding from some of those, so I don't know if they're looking at trying to get more in the pool for us all to share, or if they're reallocating the current pool. So when I go through and read the pertinent ones, if I feel they're pertinent to you guys, I will certainly forward so you guys can pay attention to those. But there's a lot of bills out there on guns and things like that, and, but certainly the big one probably is the, how land is taxed here, and then the taxation authority for the county.
Madam Chairman, for these, I was just doing the ones that our State Association recommends. If there is more, but that's kind of what I was sticking to, but if there's more you want me to research, I certainly can do that.
And I did check, and the governor has not come out with her legislation concerning the zoning yet today, so I'm sure it'll be out by the end of the week to see what she's proposing for changes on that. Any other comments on legislative action? All right, number 25 is ambulance task force. We did have a meeting last night and continue our discussion on the financial aspects of operating an ambulance service, about possibly getting an outside entity to come in and do our billing for us. The city of Mitchell has just started doing that. Instead of doing it in-house, they're now going to have a third party do that billing for them. They feel it's going to save them money, increase recoveries, et cetera. Our next meeting will be on Presidents' Day, 7:00 PM in this room. We'll be talking about ambulance districts, which is in South Dakota, codified law, very similar to a fire district. So pros and cons of possibly moving our ambulance service to a district will be the next topic. You're welcome to come and enjoy the festivities. Any comments on that, Joe? Okay. All right. Item number 26, Township Board Meeting Update. Don and I sat down with township board members from five townships, that being Turkey Valley, Mayfield, Marindale, Walshtown, and Jamesville. It was a long, good discussion, and just to touch on the highlights of the concerns that were raised, roads and dollars spent on roads in those areas was a big concern. It was understood that this is not a recent issue. This is an issue that has been building over 10 or 20 years, feeling there's not enough dollars being spent on the roads in the area. Second one would be districts and representation. There's a feeling out in the outer skirts of the county, away from the concentrated population area, that folks are feeling they're not represented here on the commission, on the Planning Commission as well. And the topic has been brought up a couple of years ago, I think before, about going back to districts, and would that better represent the county if we went from at-large to districts? There are some things about state law and having even population centers and such, but that was discussed. So I know Don had pulled some of the laws associated, and Mr. Vedder pulled some of the laws associated with that, so that conversation is still going on. Third item would be zoning issues, specifically around animal feeding operations. Again, it's been brought up many times. Folks feel that they're not allowed to do the things they would like to do, and that sometimes the process is a little mired down in discussion, and lawsuits was the next on the list. They were very concerned with the amount of money being spent on lawsuits and lawyers and how it affects our insurance costs, et cetera. So that was on the list of concerns. Again, Don and I were simply there to listen and take a bunch of notes and then try to figure out some answers to some of these. It was brought up, the idea of secession. If those townships would choose to leave the county, the township boards felt they would probably lose money. And the reason that is, is a pretty good chunk of the income to a township comes from motor vehicle licenses. And so when you look at the county as a whole, most of the motor vehicles are in the city of Yankton, out by the lake, pretty much the south fourth of the county has license, lot of license plates. So the state sends those back, and they're allocated per mile across the county. Well, if that area secedes, then they don't get to take all these vehicles with them, essentially. So there is some risk there. To put a number to that is very difficult because it's not like you can go over and just get a list and, oh, these vehicles are here easily. At some point, if we need to, we can probably put a lot of work into doing that. But the general consensus was that some money would be lost from there at the township level. We did discuss, those five townships hold 13% of the valuation of the county. So if they would go, they'd take 13% of the property taxes with them. And if it was just the four, it would be 10%. So Jamesville added another 3%. And when I called the auditor at Turner County, rough estimate is the property taxes in that area would go up about 4.4% because right now Turner County's levy is higher than Yankton County's levy. So those are some of the issues that we discussed there. Again, we were there certainly just to listen and seek to understand some of the frustrations that are in the outer areas of the county, away from the central population area of Yankton. And I live in Central, so I certainly understand some of those concerns, living out there. I live in an unorganized area. Don, did you have anything? Did I miss something?
Well, organized and unorganized, we discussed that.
Very good. And that has been a contentious issue for quite a while. I sat on a township task force itself, and I did put a little work into getting a better estimate of what the county gets for those, and it's a lot more than the taxes show. I didn't have a printer today, so I didn't print those numbers. But off the top of my head, the taxes were $330,000. You add another $50,000 for the opt-out, so that's 380. And I'm thinking we're getting another $180,000 to $200,000 for motor vehicles, 10% game tax, motor fuels, all of those little line items the townships currently get, the organized townships. Well, if you're unorganized, the county gets that. So if you're an organized township and about 50% of your funds come from property taxes, 50% comes from something else, well, the county's kind of in the same boat. So we get a little more from property taxes because we actually tax higher than most of the organized townships do in our areas. So too often we forget, we don't just get property taxes from those unorganized areas. We get motor vehicle fees, we get 14% motor vehicle fees, we get game fish licenses, motor fuel tax, all of those, bank franchise tax. The county gets all of that for the unorganized areas, and that number has never been discussed before when you look at that. So I did put those numbers together, but forgive me, I don't have them with me. What else?
I thought, myself, I thought it was a very constructive two and a half hours or three hours. People were very rational in their discussions, and, you know, there were a few petty things that were brought up, but that's the nature of this kind of stuff. There's some things that, you know, get under somebody's craw, and, you know, it's not that important when they finally wash it out. But, yeah, that's a little bit of fairness, fairness to all the townships in the county is. And I think as you bring things up, like the county paid for a culvert, 20, 30,000 bucks that doesn't get figured in, sometimes, sometimes some issues get forgotten about. So, I don't know, we're going to meet again tomorrow, right?
Yep.
And Joe and I, and our intention is to talk. We're trying to communicate and find reasons why we can make everybody feel better about being here in Yankton County.
Are those meetings open to the public or not?
So far, they haven't, and we did it for a specific reason of hoping that the township board members would open up and tell us their complaints, whereas they might not if there were a large group of people there.
I'd like to touch on that, too. I know after the previous meeting, there was some concerns. I think there were a couple of articles out there expressing concerns of a private meeting. I just want to kind of reiterate that I supported the meeting, I support the one for tomorrow. For those who have concerns, there's no quorum of any elected officials. There's no action taken, but I think more importantly is there's no ability or authority to make any decisions in this meeting. And it's just a listening meeting, and it's, to me, it's no different than somebody sends me an email and expresses their concerns, or a phone call expresses their concerns, and I talk with them, or sometimes I'll meet somebody for coffee, and I don't call the P and D when I meet that person for coffee and see if they want to sit there and listen to our conversation. It's simply a...
We talked about the process of ending up, and if they end up going, they go. If they end up not being able to go and they stay, we don't want them to feel like we're discriminating against them going down the road. We want it to open, and so there's fair discussion.
I guess the concern I have heard, and I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but the concern is that, you know, we're having closed meetings, which I'm personally not a fan of. Maybe there's somebody who's not a township member, who's just interested in knowing what's going on. They can't come, and they can't hear what's being discussed. I guess I have a real issue with that. We all adopted a mission statement that talks about honesty, integrity, and transparency in all proceedings, and me personally, I don't feel that having closed meetings is transparency. If these are legitimate issues, people shouldn't be, they shouldn't feel they can't express them in public. If this is going to go to a vote and people are going to leave, it's going to have to get out in public. So I guess I would urge hesitation, and my personal stance is we have to, we have to be more transparent, and we have to have open meetings where everybody in the county can go and attend and learn what's going on. And so that's my two cents.
So does that mean that I need to open up my calendar for all the meetings I set up with a group of people?
Sherry, it's different when you advertise, "I'm going to have a meeting and you can't come," as opposed to meeting with an individual.
So if instead, we didn't say we were having a meeting, would that be better? I guess that's where I struggle, is state law gives us a guideline for what has to be open. If we have three commissioners there, we could make a decision and take county action. But when you and Joe went up to talk to Hutchison folks about exactly the same issues that I listed here, it was not a published meeting. You did not call up the P and D to have them come.
But I didn't also say, "People, you can't come." I didn't say, "These are the only people who can go, and if you're not on the list, you're out of here."
But that's splitting hairs down.
Well, I don't feel, was there quorum of township members there?
I have no idea.
I don't know that either.
Most of the folks there, I didn't know.
I have concerns if this is something, this is something that affects all of Yankton County, and I'm really against these closed-door meetings. And I feel, and you guys do what you want, but I feel if we're going to be having meetings, they should be open to anybody who wants to come and listen and make a decision. And I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Because I feel if somebody wants to express concerns to me in private or in confidence, I'll respect that and appease them. If there's official, you know, business and action, and, I mean, in this situation, the county has zero authority over whether the township starts a petition to leave or not. But what I gathered is they're wanting to get facts straight before maybe going that step.
But is what you are learning in these meetings going to affect your decision down the road? And then that's the definition of ex parte communication. So is what you learn in these meetings...
If we had a vote on whether, if the county commissioners had a vote saying, "We control whether a township seceded or not," then I would not participate in this, but we have no say in that. That's the difference to me.
We're just trying to get information, and, you know, in government and international relations, everybody has meetings, and then they come together and they come to the conclusion that this is the direction they want to go.
I guess I'll just say, you know, for our mission statement, we said honesty, integrity, and transparency in all proceedings, inclusiveness, accessibility, and equality, and working with the public. That's in our mission statement, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, moving on to item 27, which is public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment at this time? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
I'm Leah Bunkers, and I work at Valley Ag as an agronomist in Gayville. So I think this whole thing with everything that's been going on in Yankton County is a much bigger issue than zoning and building permits. This issue is an issue of people that need to be unbiased and towards hogs, CAFOs, and agriculture in general, letting their personal opinions get in the way of them being able to do their job well. I'm 23. I was born and raised in Iowa in a small town in Sioux County, and Sioux County is the second leading hog producer, or second leading hog producing county in Iowa, and it's four... county in Iowa, and it's fourth in the nation. And just so you know, that's only 50 to 55 miles from right here. So, and it also borders the state of South Dakota. So, let's back up a little bit. Iowa's the number-one hog-producing state in the nation, and you can find just under 22.7 million hogs in Iowa at any one time. And in 2018, there was around 48 million hogs produced. That's nearly one-third of the nation's hogs. So, 12 of the top 20 highest hog-producing counties in the nation are found in Iowa, and three of which do border the state of South Dakota. So, hog barns are obviously extremely really common in Iowa, and I can count on one hand the number of times that I can smell any one barn. And my family owns an elevator, so I grew up talking to farmers every day about what's going on on their farm, and I've never heard anything as ridiculous as what's going on in Yankton County. On the flip side of this, South Dakota produces 3.42 million hogs in a given year, and those, of those 3.42 million, only just under 31,000 are produced in Yankton County. So, please explain to me how, in the 30 miles from Plymouth County to here, that hogs and CAFOs and agriculture are such a bad thing? Because that is mind-blowing to me. Yankton County ranks 471st in the nation in hog production. South Dakota's number-one industry is agriculture. We should be way higher than that. It's baffling. So, we're sitting here because people will not, and I'm sorry, people, as you guys, will not let them finish building their barns and let farmers farm. They work their butts off for people that are ungrateful, and it's ridiculous. There's a lot of work that comes with all livestock. Now, people say that my generation and the generation younger than me, that we have no work ethic, we have no drive, and I do agree with that to an extent with some kids. But people that have to, kids that have to do chores learn work ethic. And that can carry over to places like school. Like I said, Iowa's a top-producing hog state. Iowa also has the highest graduation rate at 91%. South Dakota comes in at 31, with 83.7%. So, there was co-valedictorians of my graduating class, and they both had 4.0s, they both had an over, or over 30s on their ACTs, and they both grew up around livestock. And I think that shows that that kind of stuff builds work ethic. Almost every kid I went to high school with was around livestock every day, whether it be loading hogs, sorting cattle, showing at the, the county fair, all that kind of stuff. And I think that 91%...
Oh, one eight-five-three minutes to her.
Keep going.
I think that 91% versus 83.7% is a pretty big deal when it comes to graduation rate. And benefiting future generations is pretty important, if you ask me. And I know there's been other people that have stood up here and told you the exact same thing. But there's more to this besides benefiting future generations. CAFOs and livestock and agriculture is benefiting you all right now. The amount of money hogs put back, back into the economy is amazing, and the number of people that have jobs due to the hog industry is remarkable. Well, money that could be put back into your local and state economy, and jobs that could exist, but again, we're here arguing whether or not these buildings are gonna be put up, because again, the people that need to be unbiased and leave their personal opinions out of it can't seem to do that. In 2015, hog production contributed 13.1 billion to the state. That was five years ago. Think how much it's grown since then. Also in 2015, about 141,000 jobs existed because of the pork industry. Again, 2015, that's a long, that's five years ago. Look at the opportunities you guys are missing to help your economy grow in Yankton County and South Dakota. You could have all these dollars coming into your county, but instead, you have five townships that are trying to leave your county, even if they look at that they're losing money, and want to join, you know, all the things you just stated. But they're still looking at leaving. Those five townships have an assessed value, value of over $213 million. How are you gonna make up that money? Where's it gonna come from? Because I can about guarantee you that if you continue to be as anti-agriculture as you are, it's not gonna come from these people in rural, the rural residents of your county. That's just some food for thought. Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir?
I've been sitting here thinking about this motion for local control. And thank you very much for doing that, because I know you'll support the succeeding townships, because those township boards want to go.
Anyone else? All right, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates, now, item 28.
A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Cracker Barrel. Typical first-session Cracker Barrel after they're just getting started putting bills in and so forth, so not, not a whole lot of information was come, came out of that. But I did, on Tuesday of last week, I did go with the Yankton Chamber of Commerce to peer, to attend Yankton Day at the legislature. And one of the, one of the things that I was really, really proud of hearing was that Yankton County got a lot of accolades for being super-good in, in education, in EMS, several areas that they just gave high acclaim to. We just, we just gotta get our act together on, on everything, and, and we won't, won't have the negative cloud that hangs over us. But it was interesting. I spent, well, I guess we left peer about 7:30 or so Tuesday night, got back late, but it was a good trip. Today, I attended a meeting at Planning Division III that was put on by the South Dakota Housing Division and G O E D on different housing projects. And I think there could be some exciting things that we might do, especially if we brought in the small towns to a, to a meeting. There's, there's a lot of programs that are out there, are set up to address issues in towns of 5,000 and smaller. So, that was a good meeting. I think that was it.
Commissioner Swenson?
Tomorrow, I'm gonna go to the pipeline safety training in Vermillion. It's annual safety. Gary, are you gonna go, too? Okay. Anybody else?
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go to that.
Yeah. I couldn't make it last year, but I did the year before. It's, it's really a good deal. I worked for two pipelines for three decades, so it's, it's important that we know how they function in case there is a real emergency, which we hope there isn't. That's all.
Yankton Day, Don said it pretty well.
Oh.
Super Bowl commercial?
Next week.
Oh. You knew that was gonna jump.
It's a good thing you have that beard on to camouflage your residence.
That's right, that's right. Next week, Tuesday, is Y E P G's meeting, and then there's also ditch board meeting. I was gonna see who, who was planning on attending which, and then, of course, next Wednesday, we have strategic planning meeting, so, followed by employee meeting.
Yep, I'll be at the ditch board meeting. So, that's, we have to have, we have to have three.
We have to have three.
We have to have three.
I'm gonna go to the Y E P G meeting.
When is the ditch board meeting?
Noon on Tuesday, the 11th.
Where's that?
Toby's.
Yeah, I, I can, I can go to that, if, if you need another person.
Okay.
I forgot about one meeting and an additional meeting. I went to Mitchell to attend the Planning Development III's quarterly update, and there's some interesting concepts, one, one of which I relate on to Michael, is that some of the counties had successfully grouped all of their culverts into one application. So, instead of making an application for every culvert, they got through the whole process with just one application, which significantly saved them time and effort.
It's good to keep in mind for this year, in case. Anything else? Yeah, just in case.
No, I was planning on going to Y E P G, but if needed, I will go to the ditch, ditch board meeting.
All right, I think on Thursday, there's a flood, flood risk meeting at 2:00 PM. Anyone else going to that?
I think I'm going to that.
Dan, you're going?
I, I gotta check here, you had, uh, 2 o'clock? Yep. Fire Station 2.
Was anyone else planning on going?
I don't believe I can make that one.
Just looking for if we need to make a notice. Okay. Saturday is another Cracker Barrel, Barrel at 10. Who's planning to attend?
I'm going.
I'm gonna try to go, too.
So, there'll be three commissioners there, so that'll need to be in the paper, Saturday, the 8th. We already touched on the strategic planning. And Monday, I already mentioned, the next ambulance task force is Monday, the 17th, at 7:00 PM. All right. So, item 29, executive session, poor relief issues pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1, 22-2, 28-13, 28-13-1.3. Executive session personnel issue, 1-25-2, Subparagraph 1, and litigation, 25-2, Subparagraph 3. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session, any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. On the personnel, am I the personnel?
No.
That you're gonna talk about?
No.
I'm not?
No.
Okay, 'cause if I was, I wasn't gonna attend, but if I'm not, then I'll come.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion and a second to come back into regular session, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're now back in regular session.
Madam Chairman, I would move to deny the applications due to the inability to determine indigency, as that term is defined according to South Dakota Codified Law, Section 28-13-1.3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything, let's see, items for next meeting?
And there was no other decisions on the other executive sessions?
No, no action was taken on personnel issue or litigation. Any items at this time for the next meeting?
I don't believe I have any.
I would end...
I do want to make a comment about the agenda. I would like Wednesday to be the cutoff for any items to be on the agenda. It gets too much for, to put everything together, and...
I'd like to suggest Wednesday at noon, or before, 'cause I know you got a lot of work, especially if you got a holiday on a Monday.
It's just too much to gather everything on Friday, and make sure it's correct in the paper.
I wouldn't think we'd need a motion on that.
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay. Other comments, items for the next agenda? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second in there somewhere.
Yeah, I'll just pick you guys, okay?
To, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now adjourned.